Welcome to the City of Plating Board on Thursday, November seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two, held this evening in the
What do you call this?
Emergency Operations Center.
The Emergency Operations Center on the police station. We are down one member tonight who was largely doesn't my source, so it's good to know his capability here. The City of Plating Board is committed to providing an environment of respect and release. We ask all members to interact with the community when there is disagreement. We value that participation about community, and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized, communities to feel welcome and respected. We ask all community members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support or respect our community. We have a post your jet, everyone has a second. She said. I'll look at it.
Aye.
Sharon, give me text here.
I do not have any.
Okay, so first, it's a public hearing. A site plan administrative review and special permit for mixed-use building and stormwater permit in the Village Center and April District, Brangley Gateway District, New Brookway Transit Village Sub-District, B C N, G D G, N D T V, until January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six thirty P M, and to continue the time for action, and finally with the town clerk, until April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to a public hearing for special permit discussions, volume five-five-six, First Parish Road, Gregory and Kelly Knopf. Is anybody here to present this, please?
Yes.
So I read this, please.
In accordance with Transgeneral laws, chapter forty-eight, section nine and eleven, constituent zone by law, section five-thirty accessory dwelling special permit, and section nine and forty referrals, planning board will conduct a public hearing, six thirty P M on Thursday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, in Joseph Feodor Emergency Operations Center, eight hundred and chief Justice Bushin highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant owners Gregory and Kelly Knopf for accessory dwelling special permit for an accessory dwelling and property located at five fifty-six, First Parish Road, Situia. Property as shown on accessories map block parcel thirty-one dash one dash forty-two. Plans are available for review in the planning board office, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Welcome. Hi, just identify yourself here, please.
Hi, my name is Gabriel Vidia. I am engineer from Brady Consulting. I am a representation of Mr. This is Knopf. Mr. Knopf is here with us. So what we're proposing is accessory dwelling. It's going to be used for family. It's just a one-bedroom accessory dwelling. It's going to have a garage and also driveway. We received comments from the water department. Originally, we had water going up into a water service. They told us we would have to connect to the water main. We made that change in the plan. We also have some comments from Board of Health, which we also addressed. We are ongoing with the stormwater permit with this, with this project too, in which we are proposing a rain garden to mitigate stormwater runoff from the driveway and roofs. Any questions?
So the planning board is going to have to decide. The accessory dwelling is five hundred and seventy-six square feet. The floor area of the primary residence is nineteen sixty. Seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty square feet is allowed, or forty percent, whichever is greater. The applicant is proposing an eight hundred and sixty-four square foot attached garage. Technically, the garage is not living space, but it makes it look like a fourteen hundred and forty square foot dwelling. So the planning board is going to have to decide if it's subordinate or not, and how they, how they feel about that. It's a little vague on what the accessory dwelling is going to look like. Accessory dwelling is supposed to look like the primary dwelling. And so I think that you need to ask some of those questions for that. We have the comments from, from the water, and they have shown the new water line. You know, and ultimately, it can be conditioned that the, getting a water line, and there's going to be tight because the rain garden for the common driveway is right there. But that's what the water department wants, and the Board of Health needs additional information. That's kind of the rundown at the moment.
Let's get very clear. You have to convince me that this is not two houses on one lot. That accessory dwelling with the attached garage is not subordinate to the primary dwelling. So you need to convince me otherwise. That's my first thing. Anybody else? Ms. Burman?
I agree with you.
Thank you too much. Anything else?
Do you have any? What is going in the garage? Because this is a question for the barn or whatever. Definitely yes.
I would defer that question to Mr. Knopf.
May I?
Please clarify yourself.
Five-five-six, First Parish. Currently, we have no garage parking. We have no garage. We have no barn. The garage is actually subdivided and split with my current neighbors over here. So that's the part.
You say that's in there currently, your garage?
Well, when we, when the land was originally subdivided, ten, twelve years ago, the garage to our house actually was kicked to the other side, so the way that subdivided.
So that was in two thousand and eleven, right?
Yes, correct. So we just, it's garage parking. And I understand that twenty-four by thirty-six sounds big, but the structure itself would be post-embanked. So it's really not that large on the inside. It's storage right now, I have a shed, and we have very little storage in the house or anything. Cellars are not really usable, so it's, it's mainly for that, for things like lawn tractor, which sits outside for the most part, a lot of the outdoor stuff. That's, that's the primary reason. And then it was a little bit simpler originally, and then my father moved out here, relocated these in the back. And so hence the accessory dwelling.
Do you have a picture of what the accessory dwelling's going to look like?
So not a final, but I can give you some indication of other than what, do you have a, did you have an elevation in there? So that, that's just, yeah, that's very simple. So that front gable is actually the barn. The accessory dwelling would be that perpendicular to our gable and connected only by roof. Does that make sense? And then there's a floor plan too. I don't know if you guys have this. And these are just my sketches. This is not, these are not builder drawn yet, which we plan to do next month. So it'll look like that. It'll be finished on the outside, obviously, but you can see.
So you've already started to build that?
No, 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 no. No, that's just a picture.
But that would be, that's the garage.
That's what it would look like. It'll be obviously sided, similar to our house. If it's seater shakes or what, it's DVD, but it won't.
But that's the way I view the accessory dwelling.
Well, it would go off the side. I mean, if I had anything on to that would, oh, let me shoot this. This is my couple woman. Do you have these? Do you have this one?
My question.
Do you have these? Yeah, yeah.
And I sent pictures to the board this week of what the primary dwelling looks like. It's an old seventeen-by-forty-one farmhouse. This is what, you know, they're proposing. This is the driveway that they have. This is the common driveway. They basically be somewhere in there, and this is further up on the driveway.
So my question is, that's a little crowded on that driveway. So although on by law, Kelly, you could have three lots on common driveway, I think you would have five or six driveways? Is that correct? Are they the common driveway?
Boy, we have one now.
There was another for us.
I tell you, five. Is that right?
I told them.
That would be correct.
Yeah.
There's two across the way, and one in the way, in the way, back.
Back, yeah.
For the lot, up for the lot.
A little crowded. A little crowded for the western.
Well, we're only talking about, are we also doing that driveway?
No, the common driveway has already been approved. The common driveway was constructed in two thousand and eleven, so we are not talking about the common driveway.
But I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, the common driveway was already approved.
Mr. McLean?
Nothing right now. Thank you.
Okay.
As far as accessory dwellings, though, I, I personally, I, I understand that accessory use structure being the garage. I think that's a great idea, you know, if you get to have some other sort of use on your property for structure. And I also think that it makes sense to do the accessory dwelling as part of that construction rather than having a third building or adding tier coves, which might be more so just a complicated or undesirable if you're living with other family members. I guess to Patty's point about kind of the size of mass, one question I have is kind of in regards to the, the ceiling height of the accessory dwelling and then the roof height of the, of kind of keeping the same roof height coming across. This adds a lot of mass, and since your calculated floor area can only be on the first floor, I guess I question why you need so much roof space above the ceiling. Perhaps there's architecturally a way to maybe step the roof down a bit, and like if you need some sort of penetration, you could add another gable to make it ornamental or something. But I wonder if that could help to reduce the mass and make it almost look more like a barn of a small structure attached to it rather than a big kind of building.
That was the initial thought that I had with this drawing. You can't, probably can't see it, but I had it at half because we're not going to use the upstairs. It's going to be first floor living ground.
Right.
Right? And so that's actually a question that we have. We're meeting with the builder next month to talk about, is it possible to get the right amount of pitch with a lower roof and just leave it open, which I think it is because it's post-embanked. So it should be okay for them to design it that way. That's absolutely on the table.
Okay. Because I would say that that, at least for me, in terms of the mass, certainly.
Yeah, it would bring that.
Yeah, and almost make it a better looking project. And you could, you, you know, except obviously the look feels up to you, but if you wanted to, you could even almost do something with trim work or siding that almost makes it look like more of a barn style building here with a small apartment attached to it, which might further mentally reduce the mass of the.
Yeah, and I, I don't want you to take that actual visual represent, that is my
Sure.
kind of rendering of what this, just based on size alone, we're certainly going to do our best to kind of make it look like it's not, like that ties in within the house. And you're right, I mean, we kicked around and actually did an addition off, off the back and kind of walked away from that because this was almost easier. The space was not used. It used to look like this, and then a bunch of white pines grew in ten years, and they're out of control. And so before they all start growing and snapping, we, you know, we thought that that was the best option. It was just a poker back there.
Okay. That, that's still in common, if there's a way to bring down the mass of that kind of like secondary part where the accessory dwelling lies. I think that that would, I'd be a lot more favorable to that in terms of the finding of whether it's subordinate to the primary dwelling.
And I would have to see that before I would approve accessory dwelling. We would have to see that. We know everybody has their very best intention, but let me tell you that never really plays out yet.
So I would suggest, and that
Sure.
that you might want to relocate the accessory dwelling. You've got this driveway and whatever, there has to be a better way to utilize this space. Having it, having the two together, have it come forward. There's a better way to do this. I know that there is.
You mean separate from?
It could still be attached, but, but, but further forward.
On the lot itself, do you mean?
Yes. So where you have the proposed concrete driveway, you bring your accessory dwelling forward so that basically it comes here, like so. It goes into your garage barn. So it doesn't give us the appearance that you could put a second floor up there.
So the issue
It's the mass of it.
It's the massive portion of it. For the accessory dwelling, it's not, the issue isn't that it's attached to the barn. The issue is that
That's a mess.
It would, it's the whole structure itself. That structure has to be subordinate to the primary structure, which is the way you live. So normally, when we see these things, it's a second floor living, or a garage, which I know you don't want to get down the stairs, and we totally agree with that. And we are totally in favor of accessory dwellings. This is a very big building on a pretty small garage. So and I know the barn has to be big enough to put in trucks or whatever, but I would actually have to see to that point. I, I have to see a drawing of that to be able to approve an accessory dwelling that would be appropriate in that particular area. Does everyone disagree?
I agree. I think you have even said that you have to have this engineer, that you have to, you're talking to four people, and you need with someone next month. I'm not sure that you have all the conducts and road reading. I think that you need to do a little bit more homework and come back to us with
Football drawing.
Right. With what it's actually proposed to look like.
Now, we need to see the reality, which I'm sure you understand.
Yes. I probably would have done that. I didn't realize that that was a prerequisite for this, or is it just situational?
No, most of all, of the closer to what we, the common.
Okay.
As, as a, as a board member, I deal really well in that abstract of what the building's going to look like. Because trust me, it never looks like that. It never, ever looks like that. Five years, that big is never looked like that. And it's always kind of slap. In the basement, we want to say that's not the major order they were going to do. So we don't want people to shake their houses down when they're not in that business part of it. So we don't really like to see that. So I, I would suggest that you need to go back into a little more engineering and then come back to us with a little more concrete development, not this abstract apartment. This is what we think we ought to do.
I mean, planning certainly helps. Especially your type of, you know, files and a book and a permit, just for the rapper. I guess my only thought that might be a little bit different from the rest of the board is regarding this accessory use versus accessory dwelling. When they become combined, the buyer uses that it needs to be subordinate. However, I'm, as far as accessory use structures go, I don't mind a big structure because traditionally, barns were much larger than farmhouses, you know, and that's a kind of a historical aesthetic that is precedent. What, what's important to me, though, is that this looks more like a barn of a small apartment attached rather than like what Patty's concerned is a second house, per se. So I think like trying to, trying to nail that is going to be like the important aspect in terms of your, your architecture plan and how it fits with the rest of the property. But, but as far as I, I, I mean, I'm okay if the barn is bigger than us, if it is perceived to be a barn.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent, a hundred percent. Yeah.
And then, and then obviously make, like I, like I already mentioned, but bringing that repliant down and finding a way to make the apartment that's attached to a set barn look kind of smaller than
Like a shed that you've attached to the barn?
Yeah, yeah.
Like an L.
Yeah. What if it's a shed roof off the side of the barn? First is a gable end, do you know what I mean?
Yes.
On a perpendicular gable end, and a shed line, a shed roof that comes off of this roof, but it's running the same way. This side is
You have to show us.
Yeah, I could, we could do that. We can do that.
You have to, because it's very hard to try to do this option.
No, a hundred percent.
You know what, and it's in your best interest that this be dealt with so that you know exactly what you're getting. But you have to inform to us.
And we knew, we knew that, we hadn't talked to the details yet. We were trying to jump through this first, just, just to, I think, so at least we know this, though.
The devil is in the details.
And that, that's totally good. That's what I do, I do, so it's.
Unfortunately, I'd like to camera, somebody, we have a stomach issue.
I just want to ask a camera a question. Is the, is the rain, is this stormwater insurance here, this rain garden for this lot with the common driveway?
No, this is for the accessory dwelling and the barn.
Okay, it's for
So I have a separate stormwater permit for this, which is not, it's not, it's administrative review, so it's not, plenty more doesn't have to go. I have a separate one for the barn and the accessory dwelling.
Okay. But to Ann's point, things could move. This, this, that's what I, I just didn't know if this rain garden area was part of the common driveway.
No, there's rain gardens along the edge of the common driveway
Yeah, I see those.
that can't be, can't
Sure. Okay, but that's all.
So although it's a illusion right now, that rain garden.
Right, right. Can I just ask a quick question about when you were saying move it? Were you saying move the, this face of the accessory dwelling forward?
The whole thing.
The whole thing, the whole footprint?
Yeah. So that it becomes
Wouldn't it be tighter, though, up against that rain garden, if that's
The rain garden move camera, no, not in the driveway.
No, 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 in the plant.
That's what I was getting.
Can this move?
I don't know. I mean, I'm not the engineer. Right, so this is for sure. We don't have, I mean, we, they've got comments back on the first pass of the, of the plan, and, you know, if, if it needs to change, it needs to change.
But you could also, rather than moving it forward, you could move back so that it becomes deliberate. You need an architect.
We have, we're talking, we got, we got, I'll bring you those drawings next time.
And, and you'll, and you'll go, and you'll, that architect will know what I'm concerned.
Sure, yeah, 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 a hundred percent.
So, well, engineering is great. We always be that aesthetic book, which, what if I say all architects are engineers, and all the engineers are architects, and it's the opposite.
Engineers are better.
All right, Karen, what do you say?
So bear in mind, then, it has to be subordinate. And also bear in mind, the accessory dwelling shall be designed so that the appearance of the building remains unchanged as much as feasible and possible. You've got, you've got to present to the board how it's really going to look.
Right.
I mean, it, it can't be bad. How long do you think you need for, to get something together? Knowing what the board wants now?
My guess is we'll, we're looking at January at this point.
Okay, so we have time either January twelfth, or we have January twenty-sixth meeting.
I'd say the twenty-sixth right now.
So when you touch, the building gets off and comes back, you love coming back over and over.
If that doesn't, do I just, if that time isn't enough, or do I just not set the timer now?
No, we, you have to
I got it set. So January twenty-sixth?
So what I am going to ask, though, is I'm going to ask for a continuance of the stormwater permit to beyond that, to February, I want, I want a continuance for both of them until February tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, so that, because obviously, the stormwater ties to the accessory dwelling. I don't want to give you a stormwater permit and then have, have you go change everything. And because you'll, you'll be coming back on the stormwater permit. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, maybe. This is, do we need to take input from the public at this point?
It's a public hearing. This is a public hearing, so. Is anyone in the audience have something you'd like to touch? Extra news? Or across the driveway?
We just came to, you know, learn about
Can you just please identify yourself? Nate, just identify yourself with your name.
Peter Sage.
And why do you say name?
Five-six-two, First Parish. Yeah, so we just wanted to come to learn, you know, we're talking with G T about the project a bit in there, so we're obviously aware, but we're not familiar with the details of what the building would look like. So the concerns that you have been expressing are, you know, ones that we'd be interested to learn on as well.
Would you have any other concerns that you would like us to consider?
I mean, and I guess not specifically, just, you know, our house, our house faces away from First Parish towards the site where they'll be building on. So it's kind of like, you know, out our front door is where the project will be. So for that reason, we're obviously, you know, interested in what the, what the building will look like and the impact that might have on the overall park.
So I think what people have to know, and we all know where you live, and we all look to see where you live, so we all kind of know like what's going on. So we all kind of know basically what, what you're talking about. All of us are. I, I typically take a ride bike to make sure I know where I'm talking about. So
And I, I would just add that fifth driveway, I don't think it's one or two miles or anything like that. We have two driveways. They have a driveway, and they were up the end of the street, you know, they go right into their driveway. And so I think this is, you know, not going to disturb
Yeah, I don't see the driveway part of it as an issue for, not a road for it. It's more the, you know, the appearance of the building.
Do you have a copy of our
I do, yes.
So how would you look at it? Do you have a motion, please?
I have, I just have a motion. Oh, sure. I'm Kelly Knopf, Greg's wife, who, who is also asking for this permit. Five-five-six, First Parish Road. And I just wanted to say that we only want a very classic looking barn. We want it to look very New England. We love our stone wall. We love our seventeen forty-one antique cave house that we live in. And so this dwelling that we're hoping to build, this garage, this barn, we're hoping to have very, have it feel very authentic and very New England, and we would never want it to look like it is a second dwelling, or a second house. That's all I wanted to say. I want you to be assured that it will look like a barn, truly, okay?
Thank you.
I will to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing. The accessory dwelling special permit for five fifty-six, First Parish Road, to January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, six thirty P M, and to continue the time for action, following from town court until February tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have your board.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Mr. McLean, we have an informal discussion about nineteen four place.
Uh, Paul Seaver, from Great Southland, here with the owner, Sir Steve Wester. For the property in nineteen four place. We came up to the truck here as a college board design. The site is located in the B C N, like the A B C, like district. Currently, it's an existing dwelling. There's some pavement areas that shed up in the back, and a gravel park and storage area out front. And the owner currently operates his landscape business out of the site. What we'd like to do is raise the existing dwelling unit and construct five cottage units that will surround a courtyard. We are asking for a density bonus to increase the number of units from three to five. We would propose an eight parking area in the front of the site consisting of ten spaces. Stormwater from the site will, from the parking lot will be right to the subsurface infrastructure system below the parking lot. We're proposing to connect into water, sewer, underground electric. We provided a rendering of what the site will look like approximately when it's finished, as well as a landscape plan. And we really just wanted to meet tonight to get some comments from the board of the project, and keep that before we submit the formal application. So just open up those some questions.
My very first question is, do you have any feedback on fire hydrants?
Not yet.
Okay, that's a huge problem, because there's no way you can leave those buildings without a driveway, and where can you fire hydrant?
So we have two fire, currently two fire hydrants near the property. There's one right around here, and there's one here. They're very close proximity for properties. And we could actually propose one out in the back here as well, if we, since we are running a water main, that would look nice inside of the back.
Well, I actually talked to the deputy chief the other day.
Okay.
And he had some pretty big concerns about the point. The buildings are not required to be sprinkled, because they're, well, they have stories. So if one goes on fire, more than one is going to go on fire. That's, I mean, his words. And how is fire, how is the fire truck going to access? Fire truck, I mean, you can't get to the back. It, it's a problem. Yeah, you have to think about fire access. I mean, plus, your fire truck is going to have to back out of there. I mean, the ladder truck is going to have to come in, and then he's going to have to back up. How, how does he get to that last unit? That was, that was his comment.
Right. So currently, there is a access gate right over here on this side, and we can obviously only get a fire truck from that side. And there's access to here, all the way up to here, on this side of the property. This parking lot does extend here, on that side of the property as well. But we can meet with the buyer properties.
The access gate on the other one that you're referring to is not for this project. That is...
Right.
That was specifically for 50 Country Way, that they had to obtain an easement from the MBTA.
Okay.
And that, they, the fire truck can't go down there and go out Drew Place.
Where is that exactly? You can go down here?
He, he can go down Drew, Drew Place, yes.
Yeah, can he go down here?
No.
As well?
No, no, there's no easement for that.
Yep.
I mean, so, you know, I know you did, by building code, you don't have to sprinkler, but, I mean, that could be...
Solution, yeah.
It could be a solution to your, to the problem.
Yeah, I believe they, and when the units are that close, they could use some sort of, your materials in the houses.
He was also concerned about the close, the close proximity, some of these aren't, don't even appear to be 10 feet apart.
They're all 10 feet apart, except for the porch, okay, right here.
Well, that's, that's what he pointed out, that's exactly what he...
Right, that's the porch, which we can, we can modify that.
That's exactly what he pointed out. I mean, I just, he was at one of my other meetings, and I just said, hey, you want to just take a quick look at it? So I could give them some feedback.
Right.
And so, that's, that's, was his comments.
Right, we can meet with the buyer properties, see if we can come up with a solution as far as access.
But, I mean, just bear in mind, if you're proposing to use anything in the back, you have to get your easements. That, that's MBTA. And, I mean, it was, it wasn't easy to get that easement from 50 Country Way. And I don't believe, I know that the fire truck can barely...
Right, to provide a turnaround on the site for a fire truck would use up your tire a lot.
I understand. So I, those are, I mean, I just, I happened to talk to him at one of my meetings, so...
So, you know, Mr. Wiche, I love this project, and I've said from day one, it's one building too big for me.
Yeah.
And I've said that, so anybody else have anything missing the point?
Nope.
I mean, if you're thinking one thing, I would also be concerned, like, it's a great idea, but how are the people at the very end even going to move in? What if we're...
Truck.
Where's the truck?
The same way as you move into a apartment, though.
I mean, I guess.
Carrie.
Carrie is... I thought, oh, that, just, I was just, yeah. So that would have been my, and I like the lower buildings, I think they're nice cottage look, it's, because there's a lot of taller buildings over there, so this is kind of nice. I'm so sorry, I think it's going to be... Turkeys.
Yeah, it's going to be a condo, it's going to be a condo. So it's...
They're going to be sold, so...
So by definition, a cottage court, they can be no more than 1,400 square feet, and the courtyard has to be a minimum of 3,000 square feet. And that's by definition in your zoning plan.
I mean, fire access aside, which I totally defer to the fire department, I wouldn't pass any judgment on that. I, I really like this plan, I think this is when we did the rezoning in Green Bush, we added this to the form-based zoning codes that we put in. I think this is, at least for me, exactly what I had in mind for the cottage court type development. I don't know if you guys have seen the different types of development models they have in Pine, as I put it, but there's a cottage court that's very similar to this, now that it's mature, and the trees are grown in, and it's very pleasing. And I think it, compared to the scale of buildings and reovers that continually shocked me when they come to our board, this is, it has a much more neighborhood feeling, it's much, it preserves a lot of open space, it helps add a lot to kind of the look and feel of the whole neighborhood. And I can tell that more went into the design of this site, rather than just trying to ram in the largest building on this footprint that you have, so I appreciate that. And I, I, I mean, I, I like the concept, obviously, there'll be lots of details that we work out if you, you know, apply for a permit with this, but I think on First Pass, I, I like the concept, and I'm glad that you're trying to go for this. Thank you.
Do I love that concept, I agree with you. Ian?
I agree, I love the concept. I do think that there might be one too many, but if there's any possibility of shrinking down one or two of them. I mean, actually, 12, it's really, it's not that.
14 maybe?
I know they're 14, but if you could sneak it down just a little bit, so that you could pick up, especially with number four, because it's too close to number... And I, I think you can hopefully work out with fire department, it is a cottage court, it's not what we wanted. And I know you're working very diligently on this to make it work.
Right, I appreciate your input.
I would look back that when we do these, oh, wait, this is, this is why we're still going to require it.
Right. It doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't, it... This is really, a lot of us hoping it's a, of course, I were never going to go over there, but I, I love this one, the way that's said, it really speaks to what I am about, keeping that neighborhood feel, which is what we all really have, so, further steps.
Um, well, I mean, I think, I think you might let the deputy chief, you know, and review some of this stuff. I don't know if there's possibility, again, I'm trying to think outside the box, I think it's too dense myself, too, but I don't know if there's a way to make one of the pathways in the courtyard be constructed, so, like with a grass creek or something, so that...
Like a geogrid, and be, they can support a fire truck?
Right, that could support a fire truck, that, you know, it wouldn't look like, it wouldn't look like a, you know, wouldn't look like, it would look like grass, but still be able to support the fire truck, although, if that's a very long distance, then the fire truck would have to back out. And that, that is, that was, that's a concern, but I don't know if that's a possibility to have, you know, a main route that way, because I know that it has, the jail, whatever, you know, you want to call it, has been used elsewhere in town as fire, as fire lanes, so that you can access, I mean...
It would also help, if you're back there, some bigger, larger, just bigger...
Right, I mean, it could, it would only, could only be used, you know, well, I mean, you could, I mean, I would think you'd want a moving truck to be able to use it, too, but, I mean, under, would have to be under supervised control or something like that. So I don't know if that's a possibility. I think ideally, there, there needs to be more greenery, trees and trucks for this development.
Landscape plan most developed, there's a lot of projects that need to be done. Yes, we got a landscape, I would say, a landscape, but it's for the last sheet.
Okay, I didn't really, I didn't really look at that, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, because Green Bush, I mean, because they, they're concerned about heat islands now, you know, having enough trees, but yes, I, I see now that you, I, I didn't really look at that.
Yeah, we have landscape islands, a parking lot, truck, we use more shade in the parking area.
Well, it's not just those shrubs in the islands, it's not big, it has to be ground cover, because you have to get around, see, and you have to indicate, you know, snow storage and all that kind of stuff.
Right, we have snow storage on the plant, I'll be these, actually, it's, I'm sure we have this, it's possible.
So I think one of the problems is that if you're lost here, you may have no problems. We don't, it's a heat issue, that's probably Green Bush, all that.
Really?
Doesn't our wind turbine knock down all that heat? Man!
So, I know, that's a low off the tide of, well, it is. So, you know, I mean, so, yeah, by the other side, everybody's, we're starting together.
Oh, I mean, we're starting, when we have, when you have vast expanses of pavement, I mean, you just want to make sure it's broken, it's broken out, and, you know, I guess, you really have to think about who's going to plow that, and they would, can really get the snow, or you say they can get it.
Right. It'll be a challenge to plow the job.
It's a challenge to plow, I mean, so you're going to need an expert plower.
Yeah, for the, a lot of, I think we do it, over 500, we have snowmold.
Okay.
And, and it's plowing, and it's plowing, they need their capacity to block that, and store it out back. Yeah, I don't study.
It's, it's very tight, there's no storage.
Anybody else? Some further tips?
I think, I think they really need to talk to the fire department. And I think you got to look at the density again. You know, I'm sure if you're paying attention, you, you'll know when we ask for a density bonus on a seven new driveway.
System.
Yeah, that decision should be on, what it's right now. So the board will be looking for, you know, you could use that as, as basis, 18-4 as basis, to come up with either monetary or some suggestions for a project that will be in those monetary value ranges. That's going to be something that's in an approved plan in the town center.
Anybody else? Yes, that's Karen, we want to...
Well, they take our comments, and then when they're ready to file, they'll, they'll file.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Well, thank you, like I said, I, I know, it seems like we're going to lose all chapter, it's really a smart...
It's going to be nice, what, when I won't say it now?
Where are you move your operations?
I'm, I'm working on it.
Your mom is space.
If you have any recommendations, go ahead.
I think the board, when you come back to, I, I think you really need to think about how this is going to be constructed, and I think you need to be able to tell the board how it's going to be constructed.
Two phases.
Okay.
Right, there are phases. What do you mention else?
You know, because, as you know, the fourth place is very, very tight here, and, you know, the size of trucks that can get down there is, is limited. So just think about that in your construction planning.
Very much, and that's all it is. Bit of structural.
Thanks, Paul.
The one thing we would like to do now? No, it's public here, so if you would like to do like...
You can do your Donny workshop, can't you?
We can do this over, it's not a public hearing, next time it's a public hearing. This is your informal discussion, and if they even publish wise to come to talk about it, that this was their oper, this is their opportunity.
Well, I just hope the people were coming, that's why, so... Okay, so should we do our offices?
You can start with some of that first, and then...
Why don't you try that? Because I think, yeah, you would probably have people here, one, shop. Nate, move.
I will, I will... I will approve the meeting minutes for note number 10, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we have the outing.
I will to approve the requisition of $202.50 to Chesia Consulting for peer review services for 61 new driveway. $2,028 to Chesia Consulting for peer review services for 33 new driveway slash 7 McDonald Terrace. For $948 to Chesia Consulting, peer review services for 40, 852 new driveway, gas station. $285 to Chesia Consulting for peer review services for 7 new driveway. For $375 to Merrill Corporation, peer review services for 16 in the row. For $1,050 to Merrill Corporation, peer review services for 6 McDonald Terrace. For $1,027.40 to Maristly, Wittenwood, peer review services at Seaside and Situate. For $1,777.90 to Town of Situate for 7 new driveway. Water bill from leftover guarantee funds from traffic peer review.
I can explain that. Mr. Pollak for 7 new driveway has extra money to remake, review accounts for, for 7 new driveway. We had a traffic one for the traffic and, traffic review and a Chesia one. There's extra money in the traffic peer review. Mr. Pollak has a back water bill, and in order to be able to file the decision with the town clerk, the water bill has to be paid off. And so, it's that he can use the money from the peer review, and the check goes right to the Town of Situate, you know, because it's, it's money that's owed. So with all, all that, this PO is for that, it's all straightened out, the, its decision was filed with the town clerk today, and so the check will be cut next week. It seemed like a good solution to the problem, and he understands that if there's any traffic issues and we need to bring back a traffic engineer on, he'll provide more money later, later on. It seemed like a good way to handle the issue, and have the town get its...
It's money.
Its money.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So definitely, I guess we will be...
Okay. Um, who's first?
You could go first. Was that a bad answer? And what is going on with CPC and all your money?
Oh, don't go there. Um, I have the...
Um, I have the structure on it, it's all here. If we were to do everything that they want to do with these twelve applicants born, we don't have the money. For example. So, we talked about, and they had to come back with more wheel park windows. The wheel park windows are almost six hundred thousand dollars for seventy-eight years. It's three hundred and some odd windows. So, there's that. And you wish, there has to be some type of rent money.
Yeah, that's funny.
Yeah, there has to be something. So I charged them with talking to whomever, see what they can come up with because, and they have let this go for so many years.
So let me ask you this, just how's your trust have anything to do with that?
No.
Okay.
All right, and then we had the pickleball court. And he came in, his name is, um, John Nagel, and he was looking for, did he want a pickleboard? He wanted five hundred thousand dollars. And he really wasn't sure, he wanted to put it behind the library, but he can't, it'll give you ten courts or something like that. He can't because it's so wet. And then, you know, it was just back and forth, back and forth. One suggestion that what might work is to put it in your situate, in the parking lot, in front of the kids' parking lot, because you can get the pickleboard, pickleball, and you still have eighty parking spaces. But the bottom line is, there's, um, a study underway on tennis courts at the high school. And once that has been completed, then we can figure out where to go from there.
And where is that study, you say?
God knows. It's Jamie, yeah, that was his thing.
Do you wear the pickleball lobby? It's a big thing now.
No, I know.
It's like taking over New York City. Like all the parks and stuff, like kids are getting...
They even do it in the wintertime.
Yes. Do we want that in our town?
But you know, you, you want everyone here to be pickleball courts. The tennis courts and, um, gates are, one of them at least is striving to be a pickleball court.
Yeah, she can go play in there.
There are five tennis courts and gates.
Which you, which you have to have, the MIAA, you'll have to have five courts, which you have two singles in here, like I don't know. I remember they have played tennis in high schools, so you, you need to have those courts. What they do with the high school courts is different, but gates has to stay more tight.
And then, and then, we have, um, beach signage. And they were looking for a bit of money here, too. Um, they want about nineteen, twenty thousand dollars. And they wanted to look, the branding, they have to talk to the selectmen. I told them, go see EDC for some money, because that's who started the signage to begin with, was EDC. And then we have the Cudmore House renovations, and they're looking to put in, Cudmore is around sixty-four eight, six thousand. And it has to do with pathways, because there's really no access off the driveways to get to the place. That was supposed to be part of, when the seniors are doing, you know, they're claiming that this is campus, but is it really? That's an out of opinion. They also want to move the well, which is fake.
Oh.
And it, it's right next to the driveway, so they want to move that forward. And they had a serious situation, they were inhabited with families' scum.
Oh.
Yeah, and there are a few things, the, um, that was damaged, and of course, insurance didn't cover it. I don't understand why, but it didn't.
Wildlife.
Wildlife, it was an antipode, the scum slipped in, just like a squirrel moved into my place.
Well, I'd like to say it all, but...
Yeah, the purple dinosaur.
We got the deer.
And the purple dinosaur was done, what, twenty-five, thirty years ago? And they're looking for two hundred and twenty-four thousand. And actually, it's not a bad thing.
I think actively fundraising, I, I see them everywhere.
Yeah, they are actively fundraising, and the initial playground was totally built in the flood.
Yeah, I do remember that.
So there was that, and pretty much people, and then we finally have the train candy, please God, let that ever be finished. Um, and they are looking for basically thirty-one thousand of that. And that has to do with lights and picnic benches and trash barrels and whatever. But everything has to be bolted down by the LSCC handmade firm. And it, it's almost, almost done. So, it's, um, the three big projects are, Jenkins School is looking for another playground, six hundred grand. Uh, Lomata is looking for a preschool playground, three hundred and fifty thousand. And then, of course, pickleball, which is five hundred. So it, it's just, it's a lot of money that we really don't have for this type of thing.
I, I just have a question.
Yes.
For the, the playgrounds that are supposed to go to the elementary schools, are those for the use of the school children? Or the preschool program in the matrix?
I don't know, and see, this is the big issue, and this is something that was discussed. The, uh, dinosaur playground is used all day.
Right.
It's all, it's all day. The schools, you know, too much, you can't. So to spend that kind of money for something that cannot be used during the day, if you want to trouble with that.
You're on the school budget, I'd like it, and then CTC, but, but that's the issue I've eliminated, the field's too current.
If I make the school budgets, the billions, man, inside, it's going on.
Yes, now, I think that was the case. That's, 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 that's good news, yeah, they're taking up all of, yeah, all the...
The channel to get away from...
Yeah, well, yeah.
So, that's, that's CTC, and we need, yeah, in December for another six, they're coming for. A lot of stuff, a lot, a lot of stuff.
So how do you rank what, what is going?
Um, really, basically, it's what makes sense. And what was nice, um, they came in, who wasn't coming, something? I think it was Cudworth renovations. They have, half of that sixty-four thousand, they already have there yet. And that's what we like to see, and we want to see some type of fundraising, some funds, so that it's not totally CTC.
But where it was coming out, you know?
Just help some get over it.
It helps them in some way. And I'm concerned about the, um, lighthouse. There's, there's two million for the lighthouse, and I, with the cost of everything, I have a feeling that it's going to be in excess.
Okay, do they know what they've got to reconstruct there, replacing it?
They don't know.
What they were supposed to go there for, take out?
They had to take it off and put it down, figure out what was what.
The windows are as bad as you said, a wheel park, that would cost a lot more too. Because when they start demo, see all the water damage, it would have to do way more.
And they have to hire an architect in this project, and it's all for their wage, and it's on and on, it's three hundred plus windows that need to be replaced. I said it should be part of the capital plan. It should be something besides CTC.
Yep.
There's actually grants for that.
We do a quarter thousand, we do that type of thing, but we have to draw something, otherwise, this can handle it. Right, unfortunately, living with these windows, for too long time, too long.
It really is unfortunate that our, most East citizens actually live in, really places that I would not want to live in, that's for sure.
I don't know if any of you saw it in, um, the home section, outdoor section of the Lowe, a while, a few weeks ago. It had to do with condoms and water. The Waterville Situate cousin is one hundred thousand dollars. Because it is one meter for each room. It is not individually a meter, which pushes this room into the stratosphere. If it were commercial grade, it would be less money.
Are they going to get higher tier usage?
Probably.
Yeah, that's just a joke, because they base that on two family.
Yeah, family.
And not everyone has two people living in their house, so people have seven or eight or six. It's, it's really unfair, but that's just my opinion.
Well, CTC has their...
Charge, I don't know what that... Change that. So I suggested to the liaison for Hassan Farri, that she go and sit down with the chair of Hassan Farri committee and the town administrator, and the chairman of the board of the selectmen, who is in charge, she was part of the water conditioners, and figure that out. Okay. And, I want to, this, to tell me what the selectmen's meeting, when your summit came in, I'll have to...
Do you get indigenous people?
No, not the indigenous people, but rather all the twist over, what was the challenge for, the taxes for seniors? It was out of control, and it was, he was, what a rant, it was unbelievable.
What was that?
It was, it was the walk-in, Joe Evans.
I do.
And the agenda for Tuesday night has, you know, kind of energy to talk about things for taxes for senior citizens. So that's pretty much other than indigenous people. Oh, and the other thing, um, when the aides came in, that's another story.
Okay, anybody else in the liaison? Okay. So, so the reconstitute sidewalk committee is up for running, and I, I care, we have won that. And we are being, uh, next school student, I think. So I took a lot of, look at all the sidewalks. We built it, if anybody wants a sidewalk, God, it's not on the list, I don't know. Yes, which one do you want there?
Scott, where do you go up to the first? Where's Quarter Adams, near Green Cove, continue with the ring.
Isn't that, that's next, it's next.
Is it?
That is next, that, that, is that, is that, is that next to the project?
Yes, thank you.
It's on the list.
On the list, so I have this giant list.
People watch the school, it scares me.
And half of what is on the original list has already been done. So they have to read, we have to read your figure there, so you want that done first. Okay, anybody else have a sidewalk?
Who do we petition for sidewalks on, like, three A, so state, honestly?
That's the state.
That's the state. Is there, is there a liaison in town that works with the state on, on three A issues?
Okay, they, they used to be me.
Not really, there isn't.
There was, I was on social coalition for almost twenty-five years. And that's why, because I spoke up, we're going to get a traffic light and turn away the road.
Way after today.
Yeah, and, um, and a sidewalk that will be put in from Beechwood all the way down and come around to Gann pasture. Whenever Mass Highway puts in, redoes the road, they are now putting in sidewalks. So if they ever redo three A where you are, well, look what they did by North River.
Oh, with that sidewalk, that, 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 that lay above there, that's new, what, what new it is, that's, that's...
And they're, they're starting to redo the, the road up in, I think, like, Cohasset, yeah?
That's part of it, yeah.
How about, how about, um, one twenty-three, or sidewalk for a while, right? Except that it's in, for, hard, normal center.
There is not sidewalk on the lower part of Main Street, no.
Right, at Noral Center, so.
It's right, it stops at Noral Center.
And they have ride away issues.
Yeah.
Now's a big stretch that they did.
I see people on it all the time. I see people on that sidewalk all the time.
Yeah, it's busy now, yeah.
You don't like it, do you, Carol?
No, I hate it.
Why?
I think it ruined the character of town. I think going up against a granite curb is really difficult when you're, you know, you have nowhere to pull off, fire truck comes, you have nowhere to go. You have to rely on the other side of the street to pull over. I, I don't care for it. I like the one, I like something more like Halem, where it's off, where it's awful.
And a meanders through the...
And a meanders, but...
So Rebecca, I'm speaking to you today because I went to buy with us, and the new, and the new sidewalks, the buildings are concrete, and you're beautiful, they are beautiful, they are concrete slats with granite carpet, I thought, I told them that, they are, and they're huge, and very, very bright, who are absolutely right about that.
I'm homesick, I'll just go.
I do, can go if you're homesick, if you're home, go by, go over there. So, other than that, um, it's just crazy time of year, so everybody's super busy, so, um, all right. So, uh, yeah, don't go money for real, we see if you see.
Okay. So, do we want to take the agenda a little out of order since we have stars to that public workshop, public workshop in here, Mr. Burwick?
Yeah, Mr. Burwick, since you're here. Good evening, my... So, Mr. Burwick, we just saw you last, uh...
You did. You get the pleasure by company.
Again, you'll be, I hear it's a special day, so...
Thank you for having me on the agenda.
Okay, I, I'm a little tricky, you, you bring us a water drawer?
Another drawer?
Yeah, this is the original.
This, that's mine.
No, this was, that's a new drawer, that's a new drawer, that was submitted today.
It has the, um...
That was submitted today. Oh, oh, I see, sorry, okay. So, so can you explain this red line to me a little more?
That's the, um, radiation of the fence line, that's what actually being installed.
So, is, if I, so, might...
No. Can we just take a back, stand back, please? Mr. Burwick wants the board to reconsider allowing him to do a fence. And, at the, you know, above, at the edge of his property, um, so that, that's why he asked to come back in tonight. We said, you can come back in and talk to the board, so what? You know, just so everybody's on the same page here.
That's why we're here, so.
So, I, can I make a statement?
Yeah.
May I request?
Yeah.
I'm requesting approval tonight to install six-foot wide vinyl fencing along the southeast property line adjacent to the seventeen new driveway property. This request is also on behalf of several buyers who have units under agreement. They were glad to learn the patio had been approved, but at the same time expressed great concern if a fence is not effectively shown on the plan that you have before you. These concerns include a desire for quiet enjoyment, privacy and separation from a busy commercial adjacent property, and the inability to prevent foot traffic both to and from the various businesses to their only outdoor area to congregate. If a fence is not, they question why a fence would be approved at the rear of the property separating residential properties, but not be approved in the areas separating commercial and residential. Which is a good point, because the six-foot McDonald Terrace property is in the Green Bush Village Center, and seventeen new driveway is in the Gateway Business, which is two different zones. In addition, the new driveway property already has existing approved fencing as shown on the plan. That's in the bottom, there's a picture on the bottom, right, the plan? On the far side, that's on the far side of CP's Pizza. And the proposed fencing would be the same type of fencing on the six of McDonald Terrace side of CP's Pizza. The fact is fencing is, this style is everywhere around town. And especially along property lines that separate properties with different uses. I took a few pictures this morning of these types of locations, if you share.
So, Mr. Burwick, I could teach your original drawing last week, maybe you have red line here, there was a stockade fence, I'll check, correct?
Last week, uh, yeah, there was a, last week it said stockade fence, but... He wants to buy, he wants the six-foot vinyl fence, not a stockade fence.
The same fence as shown on, which is already in place. On the property.
That is, I, I did go down there today and I, there is, this fence is at the CP's area. It's beyond the CP's area, it's, but it, it is.
Along the side of the river?
It's, right, it is absolutely, it's absolutely there.
So, so, so I have to orient myself here, so that when I am looking at this picture, this is right way? This is looking at this way, right?
Yes.
So, in the original drawing, you have trees, just wanna clarify this. You have trees covering the parking lot and it was nothing in front of the building, correct?
Correct.
Okay. How are we doing with the riprap?
So we remove scarring under.
Okay. I personally would prefer to have greenery, something natural, but that's my personal preference. We need to do wood, it's a good decision, so, uh, Mr. Burwick.
Was this fence proposed in the beginning?
No.
It was a stockade fence there.
No, the stockade wasn't proposed in the beginning. No, it wasn't, no fence was proposed in the beginning.
Which is really oversight.
Which was an oversight.
Really shit down.
Now, at this point, what is the point?
I don't.
There is no point, just. I'm more concerned about the stupid riprap.
That's covered up.
And how we're gonna deal with that slope and how that's going to, and once you put up this fence, how do you access maintaining it?
Uh, from the Driftway property. It has to be maintained.
Yes, it does.
It will be.
Then wouldn't it be wise to put in, but then again, these are condos, correct?
Correct.
So condo association will be in charge of landscaping?
Correct.
And maintaining it?
Yep, they have, there is a budget, an existing budget, good landscaping is part of the budget.
So aren't they gonna need a gate to get, to get down there?
Right.
I, I think they're gonna need a gate to theoretically maintain the riprap out of the grass slope.
If it would be, you should wait, uh.
We, four, we can end the fence before that law.
But you have trees there. They're gonna wander through the trees? Let's make it simple, put in a gate slot. Just put in a gate.
You would like a gate to be happy.
Put a gate.
So, I, I just have a question, uh, not a question, huh? So I, I, I fully understand you, the perspective buyers concern, that, that makes sense to me. But however, I, I did, I get, I guess just the look and feel of six-foot tall vinyl fence at that elevation that's visible from the road is not very desirable for me anyways. Um, I'm wondering perhaps if you could solve those solutions by, I guess, increasing the size and density of plantings kind of around the patio area where people might spend time outside and then to deal with, sorry, I'm wearing my landscape designer hat right now. Um, and then to deal with kind of the potential access and trespass issues that you mentioned of people maybe cutting through, maybe something like a, a split rail fence, um, either two rails high or if you want it higher, three rails high. Um, you could always put a wire mesh on it too if you wanted more closed off. But something that would prohibit access but have more of a, an open kind of traditional looking aesthetic that wouldn't have that mass that a solid fence would have at that higher elevation. Um, just, to me, that would be a better look, that's, again, that's beauty as an added beholder, I guess. Um, that being said, the lowest, it was already discussed in the last meeting that the slope would likely have to be maintained by someone with a weed whacker rather than a mower. And a split rail fence would allow, uh, you know, usually landscapers in fairly good shape that would allow somebody to climb over that fence to access and they could tram under it with a new electric rather than the solid fence which becomes like, you have to go pull out and around or put a gate. That's just, but, everyone, that's our, I agree with that.
Um, I was out there today this morning, I don't have a problem with the white fence. I think, I mean, if I was living here, I would want, I wouldn't wanna necessarily look at CP's and all the traffic that's in there. And I feel like, again, it would, not as many people would be crossing through. There's just, just a lotta, you know, kids are running up in that dance class, there's a ton of cars just idling right there, so cut down some of the noise for these people will probably help maybe the whole neighborhood because it is very open between there and Driftway, which is, so I don't, I don't have a problem with white fence, I think. And I don't have a problem, I think white fence would be fine there, that's my opinion. And maybe just put some, um, giant fence plantings behind it, so then it would maybe look a little nicer. We're worried about that, but it's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think from the, if you're a, an owner in, in this building, like, you do want the privacy fence, so I'm definitely for the privacy fence because that is a very busy area at all times of the day. You know, Saturday mornings, you know, to, in the evenings, it's, there's always a lot going on in there. And maybe breaking up the silhouette of it with plantings in the riprap area because it is a six-foot height fence on top of a, on the top of the slope, maybe that would be good as opposed to just, you know, having a grassy hole there kind of thing. But I'm definitely for the, uh, the privacy fence because it separates the neighborhood from the commercial area.
So I want to put Mr. Pritchard because I don't need a white door fence.
Can I make a reply?
Sure.
So, uh, what, the vinyl fence provides, definitely provides more privacy than the shrubbery does. And again, prevents the passive, uh, that we have concerns about. It's also a wind, which, there is quite a bit of wind on the Driftway. A wind and noise battery that shrubs would not provide. And in the winter, um, you get a snowstorm, the branches collapse on evergreens and you wanna see, you're gonna lose your privacy when there's snowstorm. There's no watering required for fence or fertilizer. The town is very, uh, anxious to reduce as much watering usage as possible, I think. A fence, uh, address that issue. Trees are susceptible to disease, rot, animals. I was driving around this morning, I noticed several occasions where there were new plantings that have already backed. The trustees are gonna have to maintain them in place from time to time, whereas fences is definitely.
Well, I would argue that a plastic fence is not necessarily more durable, so, because I haven't popped that fence, it's lost out every year. Whenever it's a white fence, it was fine, it's, it's, it's lost out every year.
There is an issue that I came upon by accident last night when I went to the mobile station for the gas.
Oh.
And that is the light penetration through shrubs that you don't get through a fence. Now, if you look at the plan, you'll see that the approach to the parking area, uh, those headlights would be focused on people who are parking or attempting to park in the rivershake area. And that's, I mean, I got out of my car and I thought, wow, look, those lights come right through it. And if you notice, there are evergreens, it was the tree area, Alabridies, where the fence stops. And along the Driftway Medical Building, it's all shrubbery and no fencing. And those lights go right through the shrubbery.
You talk about people going to CP's, people whatever, I tell you right now, they'll leave, they will live in this building. Believe me.
I know, because he's gonna give them coupons, so.
Really? So there's, that's a given, and they're gonna be scooting along, you mind?
But they'll go to the outside, and they'll go down McDonald Terrace. That's the only way they'll be able to get access, is to go.
No, they will go to the last parking lot, parking space, scoot across.
No, this, this gonna be a best thing, let, let her go.
No, no.
This one isn't.
No, this, the fence only goes to here, this is all open, just shrubs.
I think we're, Mrs. Scher's, no.
She's dead.
Yes.
So they can find their own way to CP's where.
Because if they wanna get there, they will.
They can climb up the fence, too.
Right. And then they're breaking the laws.
But they have an increased chance of diminishing that situation by having a fence.
I agree, I don't have a problem with that.
All right, so we're gonna have to make a little, um, struggle. I personally admire being able to six-foot fence at that elevation, that's my vote. Yeah. Fence, then.
Uh, I'm up for a fence, but not at the parking lot.
Thank you. I'm not a red fence. Pull up.
I'm good as is with the fence.
I was out there today too, Bob. Yes, I know. I'm not sure that the Alabridies all along the back are four to five feet.
And you can measure them, they are.
Well, I didn't get out of my car because there was no place to park.
We're trying to finish before the snow.
So I will go and measure them, to me, they look like two to three feet.
They are not.
So I want to be sure they are four to five feet.
Actually, the tags are still on.
Okay. Okay, I will go measure them.
And we all set then? So Mr. Burwick, I'm looking forward to the removal of the riprap, thank you.
Where are you gonna put all those rocks?
I'm sorry?
Where are you gonna put all the rocks?
There's another project.
There's another project in town.
Feature replenishment.
We're glad we extended the beach for the construction.
And they're the right size for construction. So we just gotta make sure that that slope where the riprap is gone is fully stable because we'll be watching.
All eyes will be on you.
Okay, so the board had voted to, um, did you take a term of vote?
They took a struggle, or they made an motion, or did you?
There's something to make a motion.
To Mr. Burwick to put up this fence.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
If you, no.
Three to two.
Three to two, motion carries.
Um, so based on this, I think that we need to start a streetscape, maybe for Green Bush.
Please, what?
Like a regional, a regional architecture, it's for streetscape study. Like our regional, our regional architectures would do too, if they study, because now that, now that these projects are coming in